Sorry folks, it's 7:01. I'm gonna call the Planning Board meeting to order. This is the June 5th, 2018 Planning Board meeting. My name is Kathy Barnard. I'm the Chairman of the Planning Board. Let me introduce the other members. We have a new member of the Planning Board tonight. She's taken Paul O'Brien's place since Paul is now on the Board of Selectmen. Down at the extreme end of the table, Susan Replier. Did I do okay with your last name?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And welcome. Thank you very much for agreeing to fill out Paul's term.
I'll be here.
The next member sitting next to Susan, Brad Harriman, who's the Representative from the Board of Selectmen, John Thurston, Mike Cotter, and to my left Von Dugan, who is the Vice Chairman of the Planning Board, Peter Goodwin, and alternate Tom Brown, and our Planning Director, Matt Sullivan. Let me read the first item into the record, and then I'm going to step down from this item, and Von Dugan will conduct the continued hearing. This is a public hearing, continued from May 15th, 2018. The site plan review, Town of Wolfboro Public Library, Tax Map 231-60. Now I'll turn this over to Von. Thank you, Von.
Thank you. I think we will start with Matt Sullivan's review of his overview of the...
Yes. I can jump right into it. So, this application is a little bit different, obviously, as the Board discussed at its last meeting. This is a governmental use, exempt under 674-54. This is the second time that the Board has seen this plan set. There have been several modifications made. In discussing this with the Chair and Vice Chair, I felt it was appropriate to simply pass along Underwood Engineers' letter, which was a direct response to all of the comments made in my review, as well as several other comments made by the Planning Board at the last meeting. So, here tonight, we have Ben Dryer from Underwood Engineers, who's going to present some of the technical changes to the plans. Dave Ford was not able to be here tonight to present. If you have any questions on the responses, Ben is happy to answer those questions. We do have some members of the audience present, obviously, who are, I believe, well apprised of the details of the library project, which is good. So, we'll skip the broad overview of the plan for this evening's hearing, as that was covered at the last meeting. So, I think we'll jump right into the technical changes that were made as part of the last plan set, if possible. And I'll kill the lights, so if Ben wants to point out any specific changes to the plans, I'll try to have the plan set available up on the screen for everyone to see.
Good to go.
(bell rings)
Second comment was that a PE stamp should be added to the ADA certification letter, and that has been included in our supplemental. And the third comment is about the pedestrian access to the site and concrete sidewalk. It was asked to put on the secondary entrance locations. So, I actually think that one's on the sheet before this one, on Sheet C2, probably.
Okay.
But we did note, somewhere where these sidewalks are going in, the plan calls it out right there. There's a second entrance. The main entrance is highlighted. And there is another entrance over here that we'll add on as well. There's also a question about how the folks parking back here in the back part of the parking lot would be able to get, you know, to the building itself, and it was unclear. So, we've added a crosswalk, and also grabbed a path through the grassed aisle to direct pedestrians toward the building. Move on to Comment 4, which was about the aisle width. On the main entrance was unclear, and that was a 12-foot required width, so we've added that. I think this one is also... No, that wouldn't be here. There it is.
Yep.
So, we noted that width on there. Number 5 was just some clarification on the total usable space, and how the 75 required spaces were determined. So, we actually, after we did the gals, based on 13,000 square feet of gross floor area that's accessible to the moment, came out to 65 required spaces. And there's a total The level is 74.
Is it 74 or 75? Is it 75? We can do it. We can check at a later time. Okay?
Right. 78 was on the plan, so that's why these two descriptions are there.
But 64 are required.
Correct. Based on the floor area.
Okay, so, we've been with that, and basically, I have a question on the plan, on the stair, which would be just below 5,000 of the plan. Comment 6 noted that 3 of the 5 those handicap spaces were 19 feet, and 22 require for the town regulations for ADA spaces. So, we reviewed the ADA regulations, and came up with an alternative layout. And so, we have 2 parallel parking spaces. They're 13 feet in width, so that allows the room for access around the vehicle between the curb. And then we moved to spaces down here. So, these would be inaccessible for total 4 ADA spaces. Seventh comment is about the size of the regular parking spaces. We show some at 10 by 17. The ordinance requires 9 by 19 for 45 and 60-degree spaces. And we're relying on the provision of the regulations that allows a 2-foot overhang over a vegetated area to make up the total 19-foot length. So, we've added a note to clarify that that's our intent. And that note is at the bottom of 10th page. And we checked all the other spaces to make sure that they're 2 feet in length, or that provision's not used. Number 8 had to do with the location of the drop off, and showing that on the plans, and how that relates to traffic circulation in the aisles. So, we're showing that now right here. So, folks coming to the drop-off box will park right up along there, drop-off, and continue on an exit site or park. Question or comment number 9, identified coordination of municipal utilities as a critical project component. So, we have a modification to a sewer manhole that's out front. There's also a water line coming in the back of the building, and connections with the municipal electric department as well. So, we've been in close coordination with public works all along, and we've also provided the digital plans to Matt in our response to forward on to municipal electric department.
And I'll just make a quick note on that. I do have copies of correspondence with Barry from the Municipal Electric Department. There are some plan amendments that may be necessary. I'll just pass. There are 2 sheets, or actually, they're front to back, rather. So, if you just want to take a copy of this for your files, this is a response from Barry about some plan amendments that will have to be made. They're more construction-based, but I think it's important for the Board to have these in their files as well. And there's a plan on the back of that email response as well.
Right, so we'll keep going along. We did also add plant notes that require, identify the contractors requirement to coordinate with the respective utilities during construction, So, that brings us to comment number 10. Yeah, so this was again about municipal electric department coordination, and the location of the electrical service connection. So, this will be resolved through these comments. Comment 11, identified wetland impacts, and asked for consultation with the Rural Conservation Commission. So, we are going to be filing a wetlands department application to DES, and it will be under the minimum impact expedited review, which requires sign off by the Conservation Commission. So, we'll have that review as part of our notification, which we're putting together right now. Comment 12, has to do with the front setback line. There's a minimum and a maximum, and we had only shown a big minimum. So, now they're both shown on there. 20 feet and 30 feet. 20 feet and 30 feet. So... Comment 13, location of future signage is not shown on the plans. So, the final location will have to be confirmed, but for now, we just did show the sign out front, and we anticipated the lighted signs. We also, on the utility plan, showed the electrical connection as well. Final plans, shall be stamped by a professional engineer. That's comment 4.
I didn't hear that last comment that you made. Can you say that again?
We anticipate the sign also have lighting protecting. So, we also edited or revised our electrical plan to show the conduit and the electrical wiring going to the sign.
You know where the sign is going?
The final location is going to be confirmed, but for now, we're just showing it out front on the proximate location of the existing sign. So, there's more detail on that one that needs to be verified. That's really the library, I think, will have to decide when they want their sign. Obviously...
The only concern I have is visuals when you're turning out.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's an important question. So, when it comes to site distance, the apron is pushed out far enough, the stop line is pushed out far enough, where I don't think any sign location could create an issue. But with that in mind, any sign permit that is submitted by the library, which they've been very good about in the past, would be reviewed to make sure that there is adequate site distance in both directions, because we definitely did think about that. I think Cindy and I spoke about that just a week ago or so. So, that will be addressed, John, definitely.
Okay. So, Comment 14, requested final plans to be stamped by a professional engineer. So, final construction drawings, each sheet will bear professional engineer stamp. And we did go ahead and stamp the cover sheet on the revised site application, just to show that. Comment 15, requested to identify the location of staging activities for the contractors' construction work. Showing that on the existing condition of the demo plan, but basically...
We're in this area down here.
Yeah. One potential area is right here, adjacent parcel, where it's now the water area's parcel. And we also know that depending on how the contractor chooses the phases work, work sequences, this part of the parking area potentially could be used for staging
I have a question. It seems like you are doing a good job of maintaining the same number of parking places during construction. And that seems to be what you're doing. Is that true?
Yep. I probably, I think that works, yeah. I didn't actually get a whole lot of thought to that at this point, so... But yes, it does. Definitely possible. And I think as we get to making, you know, the final construction documents, that would be, that will be part of the contractor's responsibility, is to accommodate the operations during construction. So, there would be some basic type of, specific type of sequencing that could be added to ensure that.
So, do you have a designated sequence of events, when people will be coming and going, and how they'll get there?
Yeah. We haven't developed that yet, at this point.
That's... Dave Ford and the contractor, and the engineer, and Cindy will be working on the construction sequencing, but that hasn't, you know, been determined, from what I understand.
There has been some discussion about some of the logistics going to be involved in this project, but we haven't firmed up the details yet, because we keep thinking about additional logistics as we're working our way through all of these issues that are going to be involved. So, there's still a lot more work to be done in that area.
Okay. So, I got a note, so we'll address that one. So, I think that was the end of the formal comments from Matt's review. These were kind of follow-up comments that came up, either afterward, or some of them, I think, came directly from you folks at the last meeting. Comment 16 was asking if the 2 trees at the front of the building could be preserved, but the building footprint, the proposed building footprint actually goes all the way out, and those trees have to be removed to build the building expansion.
Wait, can you say that clearly?
Sorry. The short answer is no, the trees can't be saved, because the building footprint goes where those trees are. Probably those trees are right here.
They're shown up on the lot line.
Yeah, Ben, I actually do have a similar question. There are 2 trees shown directly along the property line.
Right there along the property line. One of those trees was hit by a car recently, and it is not probably going to survive much longer. Second tree is in much better condition. I understand that its branches will hit the roof of the new building. So, there is some question about whether that one could be retained or not. But definitely, the one that was hit by the car is not probably going to survive that experience, as well as construction.
Can we evaluate to see if they're too big for a tree spade? And then, if they're too big for a tree spade, then we know that they can't be saved, or...
I want to also mention that I am working with Parks and Rec and a garden committee. And one of the things that we're working on is trying to save as much of the landscaping as possible. Parks and Rec does have a, some of the landscaping firms coming to ascertain whether the smaller trees, the cherry trees, and some of the bushes can be removed and planted elsewhere in the town. And other plantings that remain, we're developing a plan to have people adopt the plants, so that we don't actually leave virtually any of the, excuse me, any of the plants on site by the time we're done, hopefully.
Are you going to run an adopt a plant program?
Yes. Yeah, we are. Yeah. We've got a lot of gardeners involved in the, you know, the various groups that we have. And most of us don't want to see every machinery running over the beautiful flowers and plants that we have. So, we're going to try to find homes. We've also located a few locations where we can move some things that we can move back again. So, we are trying to look at the logistics of just about everything you can imagine.
So, having been the person who generated that comment last time, my concern is large street trees in the Town of Wolfboro. And it's a historical fact that we had lots of them. And even if those were destroyed or already damaged, it would be great to have a couple on the street to carry forward that tradition.
We would like to do something like that, and really make a very attractive area in the front. You know, we talk about the sign, for instance. I don't really want the main feature in front of the building to be the sign, so I'm hoping we'll come up with a more creative solution than the sign just, you know, blocked out front. And I also want to make sure the line of sight is very excellent, because in recent years, coming out to the right, you really couldn't see due to growth on the right side of the road if you had a smaller car. So, those are issues as well that we have been discussing to make sure that we make it look attractive, and we don't make, like, the sign the main feature. We make the front of the building and some beautiful landscaping, including I would like to see some trees, maybe not smack dab, but maybe a little bit this way, this way. But we'll be talking to other experts about that kind of thing before any final decisions are made.
Yeah. And I'm thinking, and this may be just me, but I think it's important to the town, in general, large street trees somewhere, whether it's right in front or at either corner, would be a great streetscaping for our town. And I think it would be great to make the effort beyond, you know, plantings to street trees.
Yeah, I'm thinking trees as well, and trying not to get some of the trees that are too small for the scope of the building. Trying to get some trees that are really suitable, but on the other hand, won't necessarily spread waves away. I mean, get some that are right, right. So, we'll have to do something very conscious about how we handle that. And we do have, along there, there's also a public safety building, and we also have a property next door, which we're going to have some trees on. And I think that some of those trees are going to have to come down. We have now over on the property beside. And as part of sort of restoring that natural look over there, we should be considering how it looks from the road. And I prefer it not be quite as wild as it is now, always an ID and blocking the visibility here, turning in that area. So, we'll see what we can do. That would be sort of a secondary phase of the phase. But the front of the library is definitely one of the concerns, that we get to open any day. We want, for the whole building, we want to make sure everything looks as good as it can. Obviously, we wouldn't have full tree here.
I'd like you to be conscious of how you can cool the parking lot down, and how we can create shade in a larger concept of that area. That's, to me, I appreciate you're moving the trees, but you've got a large area. I mean, think of shade, and how we can cool that footprint down.
Right. Because that's, there are trees in the island over here, a big one. And we were hoping maybe we could put picnic table under there or something like that. We have a lot of people who hang out in parking lot, you know, sometimes, because they can use the wifi out there. So, it'd be nice to have a place for families and people to do things. But at that point right now, right now, we're figuring out a basis. The refineries, I think, some of those will come as. When I started working at the library, the tree right in the corner of the building was this little tiny tree. It looks like it's a big tree. So, they do grow if you select the right trees.
Thank you.
Sorry, I missed it. I remember I was talking about street trees. I missed that we were talking about the street trees off-line. They were talking about the wood. So, I apologize for that. Comment 17, this house roof drains being collected in the drainage systems. It can have been shown on the plans. So, the roof doesn't have downspouts. It drips off the edge. So, there's a drip edge and French drain system that is shown around the perimeter of the valley, follows the roof line. That would be probably on the next sheet, C, I think it's C3.
So, that was my comment. My comment was, how's the water going to get away from the building? You're going to have a planter outside the drip edge. You're going to put mulch down. It's going to crowd all the water in, and it's going to gang up against the building. And I wanted to know how you're going to get the water away from the building.
Okay. So, it's going down into the ground?
Just going to soak in?
Yeah.
So, standing water, when it really rains up, it's going to just build up around the building?
Yeah. It's a stone. Yeah, it's stone, and I don't have the detail, because it's from the architect. It's infiltrated in the ground.
I know we have a problem right now with damp mold basement. Again, I don't want to continue that process. And again, if you're adding water to the ground and moisture to the ground content, it seems to me you haven't moved ahead in any solution there.
Okay. I can also check whether there's a foundation drain that would get away from the building, or that might be a potential solution.
Okay. I'd like you to come up with a solution, be honest with you.
So, the way I understood, it's going to be working from talking to the architect, and of course, I got coordinated with the actual drawings. But was that we have quite an overhang on the building, and so it's not immediately next to the building. Drops down, there's a little swale. And you also have rock in that, and height, that's going to draw it away. And that's part of the management system that we're trying to develop on-site to manage as much of the water on-site as possible.
That isn't what he just said.
Yeah, Ben, is there an underdrain, under the proposed? There's no underdrain.
I don't know. I haven't seen the detail.
I asked Dave when...
I understand that there's an underdrain up there, so...
Dave Ford said there was no drain. It was just going to go into the ground.
He said there was no drain?
That's right. That's what he said at the last meeting. So, again, that's why I'm asking you. I'm presenting the situation that you're going to see when you get serious rains, and you haven't made any accommodations for it. Besides, again, having a wider drip edge just pushes the water out further. But again, if you have mulch and everything out, and plantings out in front of you, and then brass and whatever, it just slows the sway out from the building.
Okay, I'm with you, because I understood it was being taken care of. If it's not, I want to make sure that it is taken care of. So, we'll get that certified.
So, we can, it sounds, a pipe in the underdrain, a pipe in the... So we can, it sounds, a pipe in the underdrain, a pipe in the French drain would bring the water away from the building.
Yeah.
Into that rain garden over there would be a nice suggestion.
Yeah, because otherwise you're just gonna hit that clay layer and the water's not gonna go anywhere. It's gonna stay right there.
And that doesn't solve the problem?
Comment eighty is about melt runoff and melt in the snow storage. And how is that to be handled between the library site and Wyman property, which is map two thirty-one, block forty-eight?
Oh, yeah, same angle. That's okay. Adjust this.
So there is a stormwater fire retention swale at the back of the lot. Just collecting runoff from the parking area. There's also a burn here that would prevent any sort of heavy flows if you keep going onto this property which is Wyman. And a little bit of flow that's down here in the corner would be going through this weather area, which is kind of what already happens now in existing condition.
I don't see the Wyman, Mrs. Wyman here. Has the library been in touch with her? Is she aware of the library's plans about mitigating water runoff onto her property?
We have talked to several of the butters behind the library in the past about the plans at some of the open houses. I believe Wyman wasn't one of those. I haven't spoken to her recently. I have spoken to one of the other butters recently. And they're aware that we are planning on pulling away from the property line and doing different things, including the burn and the swale to try to mitigate the impact that the expansion of the parking lot in the nineties caused as far as the water flowing over onto their properties.
I have a question about the section of snow storage which is inside the parking lot.
Sure.
And it also looks like there are, what, ten red maple planted there?
Yeah.
Is that going to be a problem for the red maple to have snow put there around them?
Because it's salt or the snow in general?
Right, I mean, if it's salted, they're not gonna be as happy as it might be if it's just snow storage.
Yeah. I think the snow can, they're spaced wide enough that shouldn't be able to get the snow in between them and they limit how much snow gets put there. And I think there are also other options of where the snow can be placed. And we are showing that, that there's the snow storage around the perimeter of the parking area. So I don't think that has to be the place where all the snow falling over on the site is going necessarily.
It might be assumed that the snow which is falling and being plowed is not very heavily salted. So therefore, it just would be snow.
Yeah. Sorry.
Can you show me the slope of the parking lot, which with your tool there to say, this area slopes this way, this area slopes that way?
Sure. See, there's a contour right here. Can't read. But that is, I think it's five eighty.
It's five eighty-eight.
Five eighty-eight. So that's kind of creating a ridge and a high point around this island. So any water that falls on this side of the parking line is going over here, generally in this direction. And it's about, you know, half a percent to one percent pitch going across the parking area. And it's similar on this side where this water's all shedding this way. So this is the area where that water will end up being collected in this little fire retention area at the end of the storm drain. And then in response to the comments and, you know, identifying the potential for any kind of snow that was stored up in here and running back out onto the pavement, we brought this contour right around the edge. And then I've added some spot shots that make this depression, slight depression in here. So it wouldn't run. It would stay in here and then there's a drain.
There's an infiltration trench in there as well, correct?
Right. So it would be connected to the stormwater system, subsurface below the parking.
So it looks like there are underdrains that are directed over to the fire and rescue lot. There is also slope directing toward the fire and rescue lot. Do we know that that lot can accommodate this and take it?
Yep. So there's existing closed drains. There's part of their lot and it goes through their lot and it goes out to twenty-eight, you know, North Main Street. So we did some hydrocat analysis to have a look at that. And so that's why we put in the subsurface detention area below the parking lot. So that in a high flow of that, it's storing that water flooding down slowly so the pipe capacity isn't over, it doesn't, it's not the pipe capacity. The water is going through there.
So it's been studied and found to be adequate to take it away from both this lot and the adjacent fire?
We're showing we're not putting any more water because we're being sent there now. So the condition remains as it is.
So if you added the drains from around the building, you would exceed that cap?
No, we assume that some of the roof runoff does go into the parking lot. It just wasn't, it's just a different roof to that drain. So before we were assuming that it's going off the belly onto the parking and then the drainage system. And some of the runoff on the front would just run on the ground on the street.
So those were in that calculation then? CAD calculation?
No, but it just changes the path that it goes there. So it doesn't change how much runoff there is. It's a nuance.
But you are trying to hold back water so it recedes into the ground before it travels out?
Right, so actually what's there now would be better condition because it's being detained in the French drain.
I understand that.
Yeah, so it's improved. That would improve if we add any other drains.
Because right now, the water that lands on the roof is going into the drain system that runs through the public safety. Because there are two, three drains actually coming off the roof and draining down into that system. So the water that lands on that roof is running through that system. And that drain is in exactly the same place as it is right now heading over to the public safety.
Can we stay with the snow storage area in the main parking lot for a moment? Your planting plan shows a series of maple trees in there. And I'm concerned, how are you gonna use that area for snow storage if you have maple trees planted there? Are you gonna be asking the town plow operator to be very careful in steering his snow and take extra time, or what? First question.
Sure. I think maybe we want to have more conversation. I don't know how this is called right now. I guess that might be some good information to have. And so I think maybe there's an alternate place to put the snow. And I think there's also room around the perimeter of the drain, of the parking area.
So in some conversations with Dave Ford about this issue, he's talked some about, we've talked a bit around the perimeter, some in the middle, but trying not to have the stuff in the middle be, you know, we don't want mounds in the middle. And also that some of the snow will be loaded in a way just like it is now, depending on the snow loads that we get at any particular time.
As you know, at the end of the winter, you usually have a fairly steep little mountain of snow in the back, meaning that you have an awful lot of snow to be dealing with in the winter, particularly one like we had last year. If this is your principal snow storage area, you've got trees on it. It's not really gonna work, in my opinion. So I think that needs to be revisited. In addition, in terms of safety, I'm concerned about how people access, leave their cars in the back parking spaces or even in the spaces right next to that central snow storage area and then proceed safely into the library building. You have a walk path through the snow storage area and then a crosswalk, I presume that is, striped to the entrance to the library, which is all very well and good until you have it covered in snow. And how are people going to be walking through your snow storage area if it's actually being used for snow storage safely? Because I don't see how that seven-foot-wide stone dust path is gonna be preserved in the middle of a heavy winter when we're using that area for snow storage also. It doesn't seem to me to be really functional. It's more like a cosmetic than anything else.
I think we have to keep in mind, too, that during the winter, generally we have lower population using everything in town.
Mm-hmm.
So the cars are less likely to be back there. I mean, I think we are tending to fight our own desires. We want snow storage. We want trees. We want shade. And we want the pedestrians to come from the back parking lot where they might not be in the winter. So I think there's a little bit of flexibility involved because we know we are somewhat seasonal.
Well, their, not to be argumentative, but their parking scheme, it seems to me, with the thirteen or fourteen additional spaces over what is required by ordinance, which is even more than you really have to have because you're a town operation and you don't need to adhere to the ordinances. It appears as if you have designed the parking plan to accommodate the biggest possible event that you might have on site to avoid having parking overflow into All Saints and into Huggins Hospital. But as we all know, those are very rare events.
There have been three incidents or days so far this year where staff coming in in the middle of the day cannot find parking spaces and had to drive around one time because we drive around the parking lot. So it does happen often than people think. But on the other hand, this, we understood earlier that it was seventy-five spaces we were required to have as a minimum. It's new to me that it's sixty-five spaces. That's a today thing that I found out that sixty-five spaces is the minimum town required number. So there is some information that's still being updated as we go. But we already did change some of the parking where we moved the handicap spaces around. And when we added a crosswalk, we took a space or two out there in order to make it a little safer.
Well, if you have a nice Christmas event with an overflow audience, you're going to have, and if it has been a snowy winter season, you're going to have a problem with access across that snow storage area because that seven-foot-wide path will be very difficult to see unless it's marked in some fashion. And I don't know exactly how you're gonna keep it clear of snow if you're using that area for snow storage. So I think that's a problem that, as far as I can see on this plan, has not been solved and is looming to become a problem if it is built in this configuration.
Dave Ford also said he was gonna have some of his plow drivers take a look at the plan and make some recommendations about how it would work. So I don't believe that's happened yet. So as I said, we're working on a lot of the details because as things go along, questions keep coming up. So it's a valid point to figure out exactly how the snow is going to work for us.
Madam Chairman, can I ask a couple more questions regarding access? On the subsidiary island, what I call the Hammerhead, which is directly opposite the main door of the library, you show two handicap parking places close to the building, two farther away. I'm assuming the two farther away will obtain access through a crosswalk and then the main crosswalk to the building. The two closest to the building, take the one closest to the crosswalk. I can assume that he's going, the wheelchair access, assuming that's what it is, or the handicapped individual with the cane is going up that small ramp onto a walkway, which is in the center of this Hammerhead thing, and then walking from there to the crosswalk? Is that how the access is working?
There's no ramp. It's all at grade.
What is this little cut-in here that I see on the plan?
That's just strapping.
Is it between the two spaces?
It's flat, though. It's at grade with the pavement on either side. So the island is raised, but the cut-through is at grade with the parking areas on both sides. Is that correct?
Then both, which brings me to my question. Both of these handicap access, both of these individuals getting out of their handicap vehicles are going to have to proceed across the road, through the road, to get to the crosswalk to go to the building? Is that how you plan to have them?
Yes, through, on this crosswalk.
Yeah, I understand.
Mike, you're referring to the two, to the side?
I'm referring to that one there. How does he get into your building?
How do they get into the building?
How does he get into the building?
So he can park here, this space is thirteen feet wide. That's the requirement for the ADA regulation?
I'm not interested in the width of the space. I want to know how he gets into the building.
So he can park on this, you know, on this side, which leaves plenty of room to come in this way?
Unless there's a car there.
So that's why the spaces are wide is allow room for, whatever side he wanted to go on, he can use the other remaining area of the space to access the crosswalk.
So he cannot, that Hammerhead then, those little cut-ins that are right next to the first space, nearest the crosswalk, no, to your right? Keep going.
Yes, right here?
Nope, keep going.
Those are for drainage.
Oh, right.
Those are drainage.
What is that?
Yeah, that's correct. It's for drainage. It's a curb cut that lets the water into this stormwater area.
Both of those spaces nearest the building have to get out of their cars and then proceed across the street into the building?
Yes, just like they do right now.
Just like they do right now. Okay, thank you.
They're also extra wide. So if the van pulls up along the curb, there's room even in the parking spot for the, if it's a ramp vehicle or if somebody's getting their wheelchair out?
Yeah, I understand that. I understand that. My concern is that I don't, the way it's set up now is not terribly practical, nor is it entirely safe. And what's being proposed here is essentially the same with additional width.
I have a comment that might kind of address Mike's concern here. Those two spaces, the two parallel spaces that are twenty-two by thirteen. Obviously, the design is the cars are pulling into the parking lot to pull in there. So your driver door is towards the island there. Now thirteen-foot spaces, is it possible to do maybe like a two-foot wide or whatever you would need for width of striping from that island into the space there just to identify so the car doesn't pull in too close toward the island to give that alleyway that the person could get out, travel with his wheelchair to that crosswalk and then go down?
That would be...
It seems like a good idea, yeah.
That would be good. That's a good suggestion, Brad. Yeah, great.
So can I just offer that that assumes that the driver is the one that's the...
Right.
Correct.
So if it's a passenger...
Then, yeah. Putting them closer to traffic.
If it's the passenger, then you're back to where you were originally. But at least you've solved part of the problem because people who are still able to drive, handicap plates will at least have some sense of safety because there'd be on a striped area that will take them to the crosswalk.
We can add the stripes if that's a preference.
Can you stripe on both sides of the space? A small area on both sides?
I think it has to do with the width of the space.
Yeah.
And then having the right amount of clearance so that if you were in a wheelchair, you could navigate. So I think you would have to increase the space even more so then you would have...
Right, right, yeah, yeah, okay.
So we could...
Stripe on the driver's side, then.
So you would prefer to have it striped on the driver's?
I think you need to have something to add an additional sense of safety for folk who are with canes or with walkers but are still able to drive.
And we do have a large number of people who come in for physical difficulties.
Yeah. Thank you, Brad.
We just have to keep in mind, too, with the ADA compliances, I mean, they're very strict on what you can and can't do for widths of alleyways, stuff like that. So obviously, the engineers have to look at, you know, what would be allowed because we don't want to be, you know, non-compliant... because we don't want to be, you know, noncompliant with putting in something that shouldn't be there, so...
Okay, so I think we're on question nineteen, which is in regard to the stone wall. It's shown as being removed on the existing conditions plan and is there any potential for it to be saved? And the proposed parking area does go through there, so the wall will have to be removed. But we did add a note on the plans indicating that the stones will be preserved for the town's use. Contractor will coordinate with library staff on exactly where they should be stockpiled, and then they'll be left there for future purpose. Question, your comment twenty, asked to show the locations of exterior mechanical equipment with screening. So those are shown at the top of the building.
Oh, yeah, sorry about that. Give my... It's actually this small area right here.
And I have no votes to move the voting screen.
Is there vegetative screening or...?
We haven't discussed vegetative screening at this point in time. There is an existing sidewalk there, and depending on how much space it takes up, it would be a little difficult to put some vegetative screening there. It's really going to depend on how much space it really is taking. How high it is. We put it on the two sides, but the sidewalk is existing. And we're going to have to see how close it goes to the sidewalk. It looks like in this plan, it goes all the way to the sidewalk.
What kind of specific mechanical units are you thinking about on the outside of your building?
Cold climate heat pumps.
That's it? Just the one three-foot by three-foot cold?
Towns can be more than one unit, of course.
The other comment is that if you look at the pre-existing site plan on the lot line, on the fire department, police side, there's a screen of trees there already, so...
Yeah, and we're not planning on removing those.
It's already screened.
It's screened along that side, and there are some bushes at the end of the building that probably will remain there. The question is if you want it right around it, that's where I'm not sure.
Well, all I can say is I know we're trying to be more proactive in visual aspects of screening these types of items, and we hope you would do the best.
Okay, so twenty-one is a snow storage with that vegetated islands. I think we've already talked about that some... I will skip twenty-one. And twenty-two, I was similarly was on the ADA spaces and how they were right against the curb. So we talked about that revision as well. And we'll further look at the revising to show the striping on the passenger side to show cars that they park away from the curb. Twenty-three, request a copy of the survey plot by town's records. That was attached in our pre-submission. Twenty-four...
Actually, that plot is out of date. Lot merger was affected. There are not two... Those two lots don't exist anymore. It's a single lot.
Okay, we don't have anything about... That was, I think, something with Tandons, so we didn't get a copy of the merger. I think it was internal.
So a new survey was not performed? So I was just looking for the survey on this property? So, yeah, for the... Obviously, for the merger, a new survey was not done.
No, understood.
Twenty-four is the correction on the well parking buffer. It's fifty feet, not twenty-five, so we've updated that on the plan, shown correctly. Twenty-five, ask for clarification on whether the proposed handicap spaces are van-accessible. So we talked about it, but the two spaces below the center island are sized to be van-accessible.
The space to the right is van-accessible, although there isn't striping there? So this... Yeah, that's still van-accessible?
Yeah, technically.
Technically.
And it's common space in the middle.
Right.
And it has everything to do with the combined width of the spaces.
Well, so presumably, you could back in.
Right. It would be difficult. Based on circulation, that would be tough, but...
Not in this case, being, yeah, it's one-way traffic.
Yeah.
But in other... If it was two-way traffic, that would be correct. So technically, I guess it's really the one thing left that's van-accessible.
So one thing I note that's missing that was part of the conversation at the last hearing was the connection to the public safety lot.
Yep.
There are a lot of issues that we've just discussed, you know, overflow parking, big events, even road construction, like it's happening on Route twenty-eight right now. You know, you need alternate routes. Even if they're not frequented or not well-known, it's good to connect parking lots. So has any thought been given to that?
So that's a complicated question, only in that we're not prepared at this time to put an actual connection on these plans because we aren't decided on where that might be. But I do believe that these plans, as are proposed, if we look at the section of the parking lot to the north, I believe offers the ability to create a connection, particularly based on the fact that we don't... We have more parking spaces than are required per the regulations. So I believe we do have the ability to actually install a connection here, but it isn't included with these plans just because it's sort of presumptuous based on where we're at with the public safety building planning. That's my perspective on the issue. But I have been talking to Ben about this because Ben's firm is on the team for the public safety building project as well. And I don't think... We felt it was appropriate at this time to add that connection on as part of the site plan.
I think there should be a note for something.
We could certainly add a note, I think. I think that might be wise.
I mean, it's just good planning to have access for many reasons.
So I will say, too, I mean, they're looking at that next door site. And it was more just making sure that it's possible. You know, it depends on how the parking is up on the other side.
Even if it's one-way down?
Yeah, but I think it would be, you know, looking at the grades and just... I don't know if it's actually constructed, but physically, if it'd drive over if you needed to in special conditions. I think that's what we're talking about.
Well, I think pavement would be nice.
I think pavement would be ideal.
Yeah.
The... I can tell you that the original connection that was proposed from the public safety building side of things, if you look up on the screen, was actually proposed directly on top of this existing treatment area. And obviously, we didn't feel that was appropriate. It would have had massive impacts on the drainage calculations that Underwood had performed. So I think a formal connection is necessary, whether it's gated or not. We've discussed a little bit at the board level.
Even if it's through parking spaces, as you said, we have an abundance of parking spaces. If a couple of them, you know, just have a piece of pavement between the public safety building, I know their pavement goes practically to the sideline.
Another option could be to connect them... You know, you have like a vegetated strip in there. You could designate your width there, say if it's twenty-four-foot-wide access, build the gravel bases and everything, but then still cover it with some loam and seed so it looks normal there. But you had to still... As long as the public safety knows where there's an emergency access and then out of there, they could travel over it without... And they might tear up some little bit of lawn there, but it'd be solid underneath to support any vehicles that would have to come over there at any time of the year. I've seen that done before in different places.
Yeah, and there are products like grass pave, you know, that are gridded that you could grass.
As I recall the history, there used to be a strip where there was an access, and they blocked it off. For whatever reason, they blocked it off. I think that's what I'm reflecting on it. I'm questioning whether or not it's really a prudent thing to have ordinary public go into the safety public building, and I think we ought to approach this with caution.
I agree.
Think if there's grass on it and it's structurally sound, it's a good emergency connection?
I've seen people drive when the cutoff was... Cut-through was there, drive right through into the public safety building to be able to get out a little bit closer into town. And I don't think you can rely on the fact that the grass is going to dissuade some people from driving over it to get into an open area where there aren't any cars, especially when there's an event going on in the library and people want access, and there's a backup traffic to get out onto Main Street. I share John's concern, and I would... Since you guys are going to be working with public safety as well as the library, you'll be ideally suited to do liaison. But I have heard from public safety that they're not particularly happy with having library access into their parking area or them having access into the library parking area because they're concerned about the safety of their emergency vehicles. So if you're going to be talking with them, that's the way to work it out. I share John's concerns about this.
I think if there was a fire truck ready to pull out and somebody was coming through the library parking lot, there wouldn't be a red light in front of them saying, "You're supposed to stop now because the fire truck is coming out of its bay." So that... There could be one scenario where, you know, there's no communication going on there.
And there have been issues in the past where people are cutting through, and they still can if that particular parking space that is in front there is exposed. Plowdists go through there and plow it because we have to get the library and the public safety building share a dumpster at the back of the public safety building space. However, I think while they don't really want us all in their lot, I believe that they would like another way to get out of their parking lot should they ever be blocked in. And what we have kind of talked about is, as Ben said, toward the rear, having the ability to go through. And on one of the possibilities that we were talking about for public safety, they have a gate so that people couldn't just come through at any time. So there's a lot of conversation, but nothing's been decided because depending on where the buildings are on that of the property would affect how the drive-through would be installed. But we were originally going to put the units behind the building in that area where there's some growth close to that area. But because of the possibility of potential for a connection with the public safety on that roadway there, we decided we missed the liability so that we don't have to remove the future of the safety mix.
Yeah, so there are other opportunities, too. You could have removable bollards. You know, there are different methods so that it's not an easy access, but in case of emergency rerouting traffic.
And you can still walk through, which I... And a lot of people were wanting to go to the safety building and the public safety building, park at the library, and then just walk off.
Okay, so I think the last comment was on the book drop location of the ADA spaces, so we've already addressed that as well. So I think that gets us to the end of the comments. Does anyone have questions?
Got one. Back to the snow storage area. How wide is that area?
In the middle, John, the island?
I didn't see that on the plan.
It's about twenty or thirty feet, between twenty and thirty feet.
Yeah, it's about thirty feet.
And I guess the question there that I'm getting to is, what's the size of the lot, again, going to be? The nine by seventeen or ten by seventeen?
They are ten-foot. Some of these are ten-foot. They're labeled... We did have labels on them.
So I'm questioning the two-foot overhang. If that thing's filled with snow, what's going to... Again, are those vehicles all backed out into that travel lane?
Yeah, where the snow would have to push off the edge. That's not probably realistic. So that's a good point.
The two-foot overhang, though, is only being taken advantage of on the rear of the lot, correct? Not in the middle in the snow storage area, is it?
That's why I was asking them what size they are.
Yeah, I believe those spaces are ten by nineteen, whereas the spaces to the rear of the lot with... Over the... Towards the Wyman property, those are the seventeen-foot spaces that need the two-foot overhang. These ones in the middle, I think, are nineteen. They're fully conforming. I don't think they need the overhang. Can you confirm that, Ben?
The note on the plan says that, ten by nineteen.
Are they all ten by nineteen on that side?
On the side toward the library? Okay, so I do not think... Or I'm not sure. Do we need any kind of formal vote or...?
Well, I think we should open the public hearing again. And then after we open the public hearing, hear comments, close the public hearing, I think we should decide whether or not the board would like to recommend the plan with some conditions or recommendations. I wrote down about ten of them. Or if the board wants to see this again, I think they could certainly ask for that to happen. But I'll leave that up to you all.
So why don't you read through the ten that you noted? And if anybody else in the interim has any that did not get addressed to add? We could do that after Matt's done reading the ten.
Before we start, Madam Vice Chair, can I ask Matt his opinion on an issue? Looking at the traffic flow pattern as proposed here, with the book drop-off, pulling off, trying to pull back out into the traffic, negotiating around the two parked handicapped areas, and then coming to the top of the Hammerhead and then making a decision, am I going to go left or am I going to go right? With snow perhaps obscuring markings on the pavement, and knowing many of the patrons of the library, older, visual problems, driving problems, potentially handicapped, it seems to me to be very complicated to move traffic around. It seems to be asking an awful lot of drivers to be noticing what's on the road, which direction they should be moving, be careful of the handicap spots, make a decision to go left or right at the top of the Hammerhead, watch out for the snow. It seems very... It seems like it's asking for problems. And my question simply to you is, are you satisfied that this is a workable traffic flow pattern? We're not going to wind up with fender benders or people going in the wrong direction because they just didn't see the arrows or got confused.
And I'll answer that by saying that the site is clearly complicated by the fact that we're working with the... We're working on addition to an existing building. The location of the building cannot change. With that said, I think that what is proposed here far... Is a far better situation than any two-way traffic flow within these aisles. I think that would be problematic. I don't think we have the space for it on the lot. I don't think the parking requirements could be even close to met if we went with a two-way traffic pattern further. An alternative traffic pattern was proposed or discussed for the lot that actually flipped the pattern and created more situations with traffic crossing at certain locations in the lot. So I think that is not... That was not an appropriate approach. I think there are several issues here. However, I think that we're doing the best that we can with the building location as it is right now. I think that the ADA spaces are offered adequate protection. I have some concerns about the book drop location and the sort of the right-hand turnout into the aisle. I think that's why the aisle width is so critical here, but I do think that what's provided is adequate. I think the bigger concern that I have is more around pedestrian access in the lot, but I think that the site will function adequately as it's proposed.
Okay, thank you.
I would actually suggest that if at the west end of the... What place where you have a choice of going right or left after you've gone by the book drop and passed the entrance, if there was a sign which ended up indicating more parking if you turn right and parking and exit if you go left, they end up causing this. And I'd also suggest that once people have gone in a couple times, it's not going to be a problem.
Well, and even if there is no sign, the worst case is they come back around and do it again. You know, they loop that first island.
Right. The other concern is if they take a left in that location and then proceed to try and take a right, signage will be critical. And they basically... If they try to reverse the traffic flow around the large snow storage area, signage is going to... area, signage is going to be king to the proper function of this traffic circulation. And I think that it's incumbent on us to make sure that we oversign to ensure that we don't have, oversign in the sense that we cover all of the potential safety issues to ensure that people are not creating hazards on site. There's going to be some stop signage, yield signage, that sort of thing necessary. And we could certainly ask to have those signs depicted on the plan, too. That would be inappropriate.
I'm not in favor of signs. I think arrows, and I know they get worn off, but, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, I'm just saying, some signage depicted in circulation. It doesn't have to be, include copy or anything like that, but.
I would share ones, I would hate to see the site, the stoned with signs, turn left, turn right, no right turn.
Right.
Like New York City all of a sudden.
I agree, but if.
On the road is going to get obscured pretty quick.
Yeah.
And not everybody notices stuff like that.
Yeah, and I think it's a balance. I mean, if we want the site to be safe, we're going to have to allow for some visual pollution of signage, but I think that it's important.
Also, when we have angled parking here, we don't have angle parking currently, but when you have angle parking, it's a clear indication that you're going the wrong way, if you're looking.
Yes.
You know, yeah.
Yeah, yep.
I'd like to make a comment. I like the, I like the traffic pattern going around to the right-hand side. I think it's, it makes good sense, and, but to me, I think when people get driving around it a few times, the only, the only concern I'm going to have is with a bigger vehicle making the right-hand turn when it first comes in, if there is a bigger vehicle that tries to get in there, that's what's going to happen then, if he tries and tries to get in there, and can he, can he get out?
I once saw Humvee stuck between two camp cabins at Huckins Camp, a stretch Hummer. It's like, well, too bad. Sorry. Matt, would you read the conditions?
You want me to go through these? So these, I wouldn't even call these, we can call them conditions, some of them are sort of general in nature, though, just as an FYI. So the first is very specific. It's on the fifth item here in this review letter, and that was just correcting the amount of proposed parking spaces, just to make sure that that's actually cleaned up on all the documentation. I believe it's seventy-five, I think, I just want to make sure that that's really reflected. And then I'll jump into the other comments in no particular order. I think one comment I heard that was pretty clear is that we want to make sure that there's adequate shade and cooling space provided within the parking lot. And that gets directly to the fact that those eight maple trees are proposed, and they may need to be relocated as per recommendations of the DPW, or whoever else might be doing plowing on the lot. So I'll try to put together a condition that reflects that. Third condition, ensuring parking availability during construction. That's not something that's easy to show on the plans, but I think we want to make sure that that's reflected in whatever construction sequencing plan is put together.
Can you back up and put streetscape trees in there also?
I do have this, I have another one for that specifically, actually, I'll go to that one next. So specifically speaking to, let's see, the front of the lot, trees should be saved wherever possible, particularly on the front of the lot, establishing street trees for streetscaping is critical, so any measures that can be taken to increase the availability of trees or the presence of trees in the front of the lot should be taken.
Large street trees.
Large street trees.
You know, not decorative little, but something resembling a town tree.
Okay, condition number five, an under-drain to be added to all proposed French drain areas around the perimeter of the building. That needs to be added. And any appropriate adjustments that need to be made to the drainage analysis, which it sounds like no changes will need to be made adding that under-drain. Item number six, this is sort of just a conversational item, I thought, or a communication item. We need to discuss specifically how the stone path will or will not be cleared in that back snow storage area when plowing is occurring. I think we need to resolve whether or not that stone path will actually stay open during the winter months, and will it potentially degrade if it doesn't stay open and is constantly stacked upon with snow? So that's item number six. Item number seven is a town staff review, specifically Department of Public Works, of the plowing and whether or not the snow storage as is proposed makes sense from an actual plowing practice perspective. Item eight, adding striping on the driver's side of the ADA, the two ADA spaces that are proposed right in that main aisle area. Item nine is exploring some sort of screening, whether it's the existing vegetative screening or some other solution for the proposed mechanical equipment between the library and the public safety building. And then item number ten is a little bit more broad, and that is potentially adding a note or some further consideration or exploration of connection between the public safety building and the library site, whether that's something that's actually shown on the plans, or just ensuring that we have the ability to create that access moving forward, and ensuring that the communication line is shown, stays open on those two projects. So some broad conditions, and those are the ten that I have as of right now.
So I would just say, number nine, the screening, it may be that as long as those trees that are there are preserved, it's already screened, but that should be made clear that those won't come down.
That would work.
Are we satisfied with these indications for traffic flow as proposed on this plan, or do we want to beef them in some fashion?
That's up to you all. I would be fine to request further, you know, signage, or how indications be shown on the plan that are clear, but.
How does the board feel?
My preference is.
I kind of agree with what Vaughn said earlier, too, is when time you get the parking lot built and all striped, it's going to be very obvious as to what direction you should be going. If you go in once and go the wrong way, you will learn the pattern within one or two trips in there, then, you know, it's like anything new, it takes a little while to get used to. But I believe that people will adapt to it.
I withdraw that concern.
Also note, too, that, you know, the highway department is very good about going out every spring and restriping all of our parking areas in the lots and along our street parking, so I'm not really concerned that these are going to fade off and not be visible on a year-to-year basis. They'll be restripped every spring, early summer, and very visible.
And not just the stripes, but the arrows?
Yes.
Yep.
Well, I get concerned with that arrow that goes left, so at the, when you first come in, you don't, you don't want people going left and then going all the way around that.
Right, so I think we'll need a keep-right kind of sign, I mean, we'll need something that at least sends people in the right direction.
Wait, why, where are you talking about, John, this one?
When you first enter the site, you want to make sure that people enter on the right-hand side as opposed to going to the left for some reason, and that, because they'll reverse their flow around the site. So we may just need a, once you put a keep-right sign there, that may actually help define the entire traffic flow very easily.
No, it's not, but.
Any other comments? Anybody? Anybody from the public?
Open the public hearing?
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
I would like to open the public hearing. Any comments from the public? That being said, we're closing the public hearing.
So you can vote to endorse the plans as proposed pursuant to the ten conditions that we've discussed, and I can draft a memo and pass it along to the project folks, if that's still the direction you'd like to go in, or?
Removed.
Seconded.
Okay.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye. All right. Opposed?
Any opposed? No.
Perfect. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Vaughn.
Thank you, Vaughn.
Turn the lights on.
Letting through. All right.
The, next item on the agenda is wants to comment on any issue of interest to the planning board. Now is the time to do that. Okay, I don't see anyone. The.